Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, April 12, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be separate periods of public comment tonight, one for each public hearing and one general comment period towards the end of the meeting. Persons speaking during the public hearings may only address the planning board regarding that hearing. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment periods, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Will everyone please rise for the invocation? Lord, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received. As this meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give us listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us presence of mind and an open heart. Amen.
Will you please join me in saluting our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justiciable.
Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Board Member Gambella.
Here.
Board Member Altakunian.
Here.
Board Member Rizadi.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Hadian.
I'm here.
And Chair Liu. Please note Chair Liu is absent.
In order to balance the health risk associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interests of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Any announcement from city staff?
The only information would be that you did receive public comments that were presented electronically prior to this meeting, and those are included in the administrative record for tonight.
Thank you. There are two public hearings on tonight's agenda. And now item number one. Now is time and place for the hearing on project number 19-0003137 concerning a request for a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow the operation of an adult daycare facility and off-street parking lot at an existing 5,789 square foot commercial building located at 1634 North San Fernando Boulevard. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No?
No.
Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with applicant or the applicant's representatives or any other person?
No.
No.
Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
As mentioned earlier, they were provided to the planning board prior to the meeting electronically.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Liu, members of the board. My name is Masiel Medina, Associate Planner and Project Planner. The project before you is a proposed conditional use permit for the project site located at 1634 North San Fernando Boulevard. The applicant applying for the conditional use permit is Venus Adult Daycare, which is an existing adult daycare facility in the city of Burbank. Venus Adult Daycare is requesting a CUP to operate an adult daycare facility at a new location, as well as a CUP to utilize an existing off-street parking lot that would service the adult daycare facility. The project is located at 1634 North San Fernando Boulevard. The major cross streets are North San Fernando Boulevard and Grismer Avenue. The project site is east of the 5 freeway and west of McCambridge Park. The project site is a split-zone property. A split-zone property means that a single property contains two separate zones. This property is zoned High Density Residential, or R4, towards the northern part of the property, and North San Fernando Commercial, or otherwise known as NSFC, towards the southern portion of the property. The portion of the property that is zoned R4 contains an off-street parking area that services the building on the property. This portion of the property is subject to the R4 zoning standards. Per the Burbank Municipal Code, an off-street parking lot is permitted through the approval of a CUP. The portion of the property that is zoned NSFC contains the building where the adult daycare facility will be located in. This portion of the property is subject to the NSFC standards. For the Burbank Municipal Code and city planning policy, an adult daycare facility is a conditionally permitted use through a CUP request. The applicant has requested a CUP to allow for the operation of an adult daycare facility and for an off-street parking lot at 1634 North San Fernando Boulevard. Both of the proposed uses are permitted through a CUP in their respective zones. The adult daycare facility will serve as a resource for elderly individuals, which includes assembly space and recreational opportunities. Tenant improvements to the site such as new windows, doors, and landscaping will be provided as part of the project. The existing parking areas will be restriped and will provide the required number of parking stalls. Minor alterations will be made to the inside of the building that will provide a floor plan that will better facilitate the types of activities associated with an adult daycare The existing parking areas that service the adult daycare facility will be restripped with new code-compliant stalls. The Burbank Municipal Code does not call out a specific parking requirement for adult daycare facilities. Staff looked at previously approved adult daycare facilities in the city and found that the parking ratio applied to these facilities was at a rate of 2.5 per every 1,000 square feet. To maintain consistency, staff applied the same parking ratio to this facility. As part of the application request, it was determined that the utilization of a shuttle service would reduce the number of vehicle trips to and from the project site. The shuttle service will take patrons to and from their homes and the facility. As part of the conditions placed on the project, business hours are limited from 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. No more than seven van trips are permitted to transport the participants in the evening and seven trips in the afternoon. As part of the conditions of approval, the participants of the facility will be off the premises by 2:30 p.m. with minimal staff remaining on the property for cleaning and administrative work no later than 6:00 p.m. Due to the effects that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on traffic patterns, a standard traffic analysis was not able to be conducted. As part of the conditions of approval, the applicant is required to conduct a trip generation analysis to ensure that the trips generated by the project are below the threshold of significant impact. Staff has analyzed the CUP request and has determined that the proposed use is compatible with surrounding commercial, retail, and residential uses in the area. The conditions of approval placed on the project requiring a shuttle service, limiting the number of trips servicing the facility, and limiting the hours of operation, will ensure that the proposed use has minimal impacts to the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving project number 19-0003137, a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of an adult daycare facility and an off-street parking lot at 1634 North San Fernando Boulevard, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Masiel. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. And let's see, is everybody able to view the presentation and hear me well?
Yes, I can see the screen and I can hear you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the planning board, planning staff, and members of the public. My name is Josh Geier. I'm with an office called Burns &amp; Bouchard. I'm joined by my colleague tonight, Jonathan Launer, also Burns &amp; Bouchard, and we're here representing Venus Adult Day Healthcare Center, who is the applicant for this project. Next slide, please, Masiel. I wanted to start off a little bit and give you some details about what Venus is and what we're proposing today. So Venus Adult Day Healthcare Center has operated for about 20 years at 1809 West Magnolia, located in the city of Burbank. The conditional use request tonight would facilitate the relocation of that facility to 1634 North San Fernando Boulevard. What Venus does is it provides nutritional, entertainment, counseling, other services to program participants. In this case, the program participants are senior citizens in the local area. And Venus provides a vital service to this local community because it creates daily routines, social opportunities, et cetera, for senior citizens who otherwise would not have these opportunities. Next slide, please. The subject site, as noted by staff, is located on the northern side of San Fernando Boulevard, near the interchange with Interstate 5 and Empire Avenue. To the north, we have residential uses. To the west is a gas station. To the south, our various commercial uses, including two motels, auto repair, a bar, and a liquor store. Next slide, please. So this is the current site. The site used to be a post office, which closed in 2014, and the site has remained vacant since then. So on the left is a view of the existing project site as it is. And then the picture on the right is the commercial uses across San Fernando Boulevard. Next slide, please. The picture on the right is the old post office loading dock, which would be refurbished and renovated in conjunction with this project. As staff noted, the majority of the project site is located in the North San Fernando Commercial Zone. Next slide, please. So our request tonight is approval of a conditional use permit and determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. The project is also compliant with existing building codes, and it also provides code-required automobile parking. The proposed use also is heavily regulated by other state agencies as well, so the CUP is just one component of the regulatory agencies that Venus has to engage with. Next slide, please. We believe that this project would bring a number of benefits to the community. As I mentioned, the site is an old post office, which has been vacant for over six years now, seven years at this point. It also provides a lower intensity transitional use that we believe is a good buffer from residential areas to the north to more intense commercial uses along San Fernando Boulevard. Staff also outlined the transportation system that the site uses. Individual program participants do not drive and park at the site individually. There are van pool and car pool systems that assist seniors from their places of residence to the facility. There will also be some significant visual improvements as well from new landscaping, restoring the building facade, and repaving and restriping the existing parking facilities. Next slide, please. Thank you very much for your consideration tonight, and we encourage you to adopt staff's recommendation for the conditional use permit and associated conditions of approval. Thank you very much, and we're here for any questions you have.
Mike.
We will now open the public hearing to hear from any person who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
At the moment, no, but we'll give it a couple of minutes for them to come through.
Thank you. Please notify us.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you very much. There will be no further public comment. I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of 10 minutes for rebuttal.
This is Josh Geier. For the record, no further comments, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question for staff. This applicant has been pretty much operating stealthily on Magnolia for 20 years. Has there been any issues with that facility that have you inquired?
To our knowledge, we haven't received any recent complaints regarding that site.
I'm sorry, you said no complaints?
We have not received any recent complaints on that site.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have one question for the applicant. On Exhibit D2, is it D2 that has the occupant load? You're calculating that the occupant load will be 171. Is that in staff and the visitors combined?
That specific occupancy count is just the building code equation for that specific assembly area. It's not the proposed count. And as I mentioned in the presentation as well, the state will regulate how many participants can be on-site. So that's just a building code calculation.
What is states the regulation on the maximum number of occupants for this facility?
So that's actually a little bit in flux right now due to COVID-19. So right now, you know, we anticipate that there will be more participants than what are typically allowed on the Magnolia site, which is typically around 50 to 60. But, you know, as I said, just with guidelines and how that whole situation is evolving, we expect it'll be more than what's currently happening at Magnolia, but time will tell how the state will choose to move forward with that.
Thank you very much. Have no further comments? Is there any other comments or questions?
Question from staff?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. For Condition 18, when does that kind of trip generation analysis get deployed in CUPs?
So that trip generation analysis must be completed within two years of them starting operation. So we're anticipating that by the time that analysis is done, things will kind of be a little bit more back to normal. So the traffic count of the analysis would be a lot more accurate at that time.
Sure, but when do you decide who has to do one?
So this was kind of a isolated case because of the COVID-19 pandemic. I mean, usually we would have the applicant do that analysis before they occupy a location, but because of the counts would not be accurate, we decided to work with the applicant and allow for the use to occupy that building. And the applicant actually got a third-party traffic engineer, and they provided some conditions that would ensure that the operation of the daycare facility would not create any significant impacts. And that's what's reflected in the conditions of approval in front of you.
Madam Chair, if I can add to the response?
Please.
Take that as a yes. Okay. So to Board Member Gambola's question, the analysis is conducted upfront when the application submit is made. So what they did is they were reviewed both by planning and transportation planning staff, and based on our local VMT guidelines that have been developed by transportation planning, they looked at the project request. The threshold of 110 trips is kind of like a milestone that's met. If they exceed that number, then it triggers VMT provisions that extend beyond what the requirements are now. So what happened was when we reviewed the project, working with their traffic engineer and transportation planning, they agreed that establishing these requirements or criteria that are noted pretty much between hours of operation, the number of vehicles that are allowed on-site, and then up to Condition 18. So I'd say between Condition 7 all the way through 18 were specifically driven by kind of this agreement that we would establish guardrails, so to speak, when it comes to the operational, projected operational demands of the property and the use. And if they operated within those, we would go back in year two from the date of operation and just confirm that they're staying within those guardrails as far as impacts on traffic and, you know, operational demands. So the analysis is done upfront, and based on the best information we had available then, they set these requirements as conditions of approval, and then there's the follow-up or verification that would happen in year two.
Thank you very much. And I have two questions for staff. First question is about Burbank Bridge, planned completion of the bridge and reopening of Burbank Boulevard, because I noticed in one of the comments that their concern is traffic due to Burbank Boulevard closure. Do we have any planned date of reopening for Burbank Boulevard?
Ma'am, I don't have that information in front of us. I know they're working pretty aggressively to complete that, but the dates shifted somewhat. So I would think it'd be... I don't want to give you the wrong date. I mean, it's understood, if they're up and running in, you know, let's say the next four to five months, like all other traffic, they're going to have to find alternate means to get to the location, but the reality of it is they're still going to operate under the parameters of the number of vehicles that are allowed to be on-site, the hours of the business. And then you're right, that might shift once Burbank Bridge opens up, but we won't know that until the date. And like I said, the dates shifted a couple of times already. I think I want to just say we can follow up and give you an update post the meeting, but I don't have a set date right now because I think there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to what Caltrans is doing and the city is working with them to try to get these things done.
Thank you. And now for this application, these are prelim drawings. By upon approval, they still have to prepare the construction drawings, and that will take some time to get the actual permit. Is it correct? Do we have some time gap from now until the actual building permit for this adult daycare center?
Right, yes. I don't know whether or not the applicant has already taken the liberty to, you know, start working on those construction plans, but typically after the appeal period is over, the applicant is then able to submit plans for plan check, and at that point, it'll go through the normal process of being reviewed by the other departments.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions. Is there any other questions by planning board members?
Vice Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Did the post office, did they have a traffic study done when they moved in there? Do we have any records, or were there any traffic studies done previously?
As far as I know, I don't think there was a traffic count done for the post office.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I now declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Anyone? Please go ahead, Board Member.
I think the use is a good use because of the, as mentioned by Mr. Geier, the transitional, where you don't have a heavy use there, and it's limited hours, basically. I mean, where an apartment is running 24/7, and it's enclosed. It's not like they're going to be holding anything outdoor. Everyone's inside, and two trips a day or five, six trips a day with some vans, and everyone gets to enjoy their day and go back home happy, I guess. So in that regard, they've met the findings, they've met the requirements, so I'm in support So I'm in support of the project being approved.
Thank you. Board Member Rizati?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I too will be in support. The other operation has been operating Burbank for almost twenty years and almost unheard of in a, in a location that's highly visible as well. In this case, the impacts are minimal to low. And I like the fact that it's a place for seniors to go. I know a couple of seniors that frequent some of the other places in Burbank and I know they look forward to going there every day. So it's nice to have a place like that in our community. So I will be affirming this.
Thank you very much. Board Member Rizati? Board Member Gamboa, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to also voice my support for it. I think I live blocks away from here and I have zero concerns about traffic or any other, you know, trip factor compared to any other business. So I think it's going to be not an inconvenience and I think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood, especially with that blighted building getting rehabbed and put to use. So I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you very much. I too support the project. This is a good improvement to North San Fernando Boulevard. And the concerns about the traffic doesn't really relate to this type of use. Because this is adult daycare center, it's not childcare. If you had a childcare center, then we would have actually more traffic and trip generation. But right now, it's the shuttle service that brings in the visitors and the only parking required will be for fixed staff per day. Therefore, I can support the project. Do we have a motion?
I could make the motion if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
A resolution of the Planning Board, the City of Burbank, to approve and request for the conditional use permit to allow for the operation of adult daycare facility and an off-street parking lot at one-six-three-four North San Fernando Boulevard, Project Number nineteen dash zero-zero-zero-three-one-three-seven, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended, recommended conditions of approval.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, I'll take roll call. Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rizati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time and place for the hearing on Project Number twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-three concerning a proposed zone text amendment to amend the zoning definitions for supportive housing, transitional housing, and target population, to increase the number of zoning districts in which supportive housing and transitional housing may operate as permitted and conditional uses pursuant to state law, and to modify the development standards for emergency shelters. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing? No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person?
No.
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 No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Are there any written communications on this matter?
There was a comment that was received electronically and I believe that was provided to the board members prior to the hearing tonight.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Lu and members of the planning board. My name is Shipra Rajesh, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, you are being requested to consider a zone text amendment to update regulations for transitional and supportive housing and emergency shelters within city of Burbank to comply with the requirements of the state law. The proposed update to regulations on transitional and supportive housing and emergency shelters are required to comply with the provisions of the state law and maintain consistency with cities' existing and updated general plan housing element. More specifically, the proposed update is required to implement general plan housing elements program requirements during the current planning period ranging from two thousand fourteen to twenty-twenty-one, ensure consistency of cities' zoning regulations with applicable state housing law, and complete zone text amendment as a part of state mandated update to the city housing element cycle twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine, which is currently underway. In addition to maintaining consistency with the city's twenty-thirty-five general plan housing element, these state mandated zoning code updates are also consistent with the current affordable housing strategy developed by the city council to provide city staff with policy direction on how best to facilitate the development of housing that is affordable to all economic segments of the community, while also addressing the jobs-to-housing imbalance that currently exists at approximately three jobs for every existing housing unit within city of Burbank. As previously mentioned, the current zone text amendment is part of the city's general plan housing element update, which includes assessment of housing needs and an inventory of resources and constraints relevant to meeting those needs, as well as identification of sites for potential housing within the city. Additionally, city's housing element is required to make adequate provision for the housing needs of all the economic segments of the community. In order to achieve that, the state has put in place certain laws. More specifically, AB one-three-nine that focuses on facilitating development of emergency shelters and AB two-one-six-two that encourages development of transitional and supportive housing within the city. Before I provide more information about the state laws, I wanted to go over definitions of target population and different types of special needs housing. Target population refers to people with disabilities, families who are homeless and homeless youth. Emergency shelter is defined as housing with minimal support services for homeless people that is limited to occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person. Additionally, no individual or household will be denied shelter because of inability to pay. Here is an example of an emergency shelter located in city of Glendale that provides interim housing to people. Supportive housing is permanent affordable housing for target population with no limit on length of stay. Additionally, supportive housing is linked to on- or off-site services that assist the supportive housing resident in retaining the housing, improving their health status, and maximizing their ability to live and, when possible, work in the community. Transitional housing include buildings that are configured as rental housing developments. These are operated under program requirement that call for the termination of assistance and recirculation of the assisted unit to another eligible program recipient at some predetermined future point in time, which shall be no less than six months. The housing may take several forms such as group housing and multifamily units and may include supportive services to allow individuals to gain necessary life skills in support of independent living. Here is an example of a supportive housing building that provides permanent affordable housing to people within city of Burbank. Established in two thousand fifteen, Veteran Bungalow Burbank provides eleven very low-income units for qualifying veterans. This is an example of a transitional housing building that provides temporary housing to the people. Now, I will talk about the state laws and requirements that have been put in place for supportive and transitional housing. For the planning and zoning law, transitional and supportive housing must be considered a residential use subject to same restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type in the same zone. What that means is that development standards that are used for development of residential units will also be used to govern the development of transitional and supportive housing. The city will not have the authority to dictate additional standards for transitional and supportive housing. The law also specifies that supportive housing shall be a use by right in all zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted, including non-residential zones that allows multifamily uses if the proposed development meets certain state-specific criteria. In other words, if a developer who wishes to build a supportive housing project complies with all the state-specific criteria, that includes, among other things, affordability restriction for fifty-five years and certain percentage of the housing dedicated towards lower-income households, then that development will be allowed by right without any discretionary permits. For emergency shelters, the state law specifies that emergency shelters must be allowed by right without being subject to any discretionary permits in at least one of the zoning districts within the city. The city currently allows emergency shelter by right in M-two general industrial zone. Additionally, except a few objective standards, emergency shelters may only be subject to those development and management standards that apply to residential or commercial development within the same zone. In other words, city cannot implement any additional standards for development of emergency shelters other than the ones that already exist in a zoning district for other types of development. Moreover, parking for emergency shelters cannot exceed the required parking for other uses within the same zone. What that means is that city cannot use a specific parking standard for emergency shelters. The parking requirement for emergency shelters will be the same as parking requirement for other uses in the zone that allows development of emergency shelters. For example, the city will not be able to dictate parking standards based off of the number of beds in an emergency shelter. The state law does specify that providers shall provide sufficient parking to accommodate all the staff working in the emergency shelter. This slide provides a summary of the sections in the zoning code contained within Title Ten, Chapter One of Burbank Municipal Code that are being updated as a part of this project. Section ten dash one dash two-zero-three is the definitions section. Per state law, staff is recommending to update definitions for transitional and supportive housing. Additionally, definition of target population will be added to the section. Section ten dash one dash six-zero-two is the use list for single-family R-one and R-one-H zones. Per state law, supportive and transitional housing will be proposed as a by-right use that is not subject to any discretionary permits in the single-family residential zoning districts. Section ten dash one dash six-two-seven is the use list for multifamily R-two, R-three, and R-four zones. Per state law, supportive and transitional housing will be proposed as a by-right use in R-two zone. Transitional and supportive housing is already allowed by right in R-three and R-four zones. Section ten dash one dash five-zero-two is the use list for non-residential zones. Per state law, supportive and transitional housing will be proposed as a by-right use or conditionally permitted use in zoning districts that allow residential use. Section ten dash one dash one-one-two-two, development standards for emergency shelters. To ensure consistency with the state law, staff is recommending updates to standards pertaining to parking, security, waiting areas, noise, storage, and client restrictions for emergency shelters as noted in the draft ordinance. This slide provides you with a comparison of existing and proposed language to the current definition of transitional housing. The black text notes existing language in the code and the red text notes the proposed change to the definition in order to ensure consistency with the state housing law. With this update, staff is recommending removal of maximum twenty-four months length of stay clause and removal of specifics regarding onsite or offsite programs from the existing definition. Similarly, this slide provides you with a comparison of existing and proposed language to the current definition of supportive housing. The black text notes existing language and the red text notes the proposed change to the definition in order to ensure consistency with the state housing law. Based on the requirements of the state law, staff is recommending changes to include removal of specifications regarding the kind of services offered to the residents of supportive housing, essentially simplifying the definition. Additionally, the city is including definition of target population within the definitions section ten dash one dash two-zero-three, as this term has been used in definitions of supportive housing. This slide notes the proposed changes to the R-one and R-one-H zones land use table. The changes are depicted in red. Based on the requirements of state law, staff is recommending that transitional and supportive housing be treated as any other residential use and be allowed by right in single-family zoning districts. Please note that if a developer proposes transitional and supportive housing in a single-family residential zone, it will have to comply with the development standards specified in R-one and R-one-H zones, including setback, FAR, height requirements. In other words, such housing should look like single-family home. This slide identifies the changes that are being proposed in the multifamily residential zones. The changes are depicted in red. The city already allows transitional and supportive housing as a by-right use in R-three and R-four zones. Per the requirements of state law, staff is recommending that transitional and supportive housing be allowed as a by-right use in R-two zone. Please note that such housing shall have to comply with the development standards of multifamily zoning district, including setbacks, modulation, and height requirements. Transitional and supportive housing in R-two, R-three, R-four zones will have to resemble multifamily homes. This slide shows the changes being made to the non-residential use table. As previously mentioned, to comply with the requirements of the state law, transitional and supportive housing must also be allowed in commercial and mixed-use zones where other residential uses are permitted or conditionally permitted. Additionally, supportive housing development projects that meet certain state-specific criteria would be allowed by right in all the zones that allows residential use. I will talk about the changes being proposed to the development standards for emergency shelters. The text in black denotes the existing regulations in the city's zoning code and the red text denotes the changes that are being made to the standards to ensure consistency with the state housing law. Specifically, this slide notes required updates to the development standards for intake and waiting areas. As a part of the text amendment, staff is recommending updates to the queuing criteria for shelter clients. This slide notes required updates to the development standard for noise. The black text notes existing language and the red text notes the proposed change to the development standard in order to ensure consistency with the state housing law. Staff is recommending that emergency shelters be subject to the same noise regulations that are applicable to other uses in the zoning district that allows emergency shelters. This slide notes required updates to the development standard for security. The black text notes existing language and the red text notes the proposed change to the development standard in order to ensure consistency with the state housing law. Staff is recommending removal of the requirement for a site plan indicating parking areas and intake areas from security subsection of the code because a developer will already be providing this information as part of their development proposal. Additionally, with this update, a security plan is required to include contact information for a twenty-four-hours onsite manager. This slide notes required updates to the development standard for parking. The black text notes existing language and the red text notes the proposed change to the development standard in order to ensure consistency with state housing law. Per the state law, city cannot dictate parking standards for an emergency shelter based off of number of beds. Parking requirement for emergency shelters would be same as parking standards for other uses in the zone that allows emergency shelter. For example, city allows emergency shelters in M-two general industrial zone, wherein parking for shelters will be seen as parking for a warehouse use. This slide notes required updates to the development standard for client restrictions. The black text notes existing language and the red text notes the proposed change to the development standard in order to ensure consistency with state housing law. As noted, state law no longer allows city to apply the client restriction standard. This slide notes required updates to the development standard for storage. The black text notes existing language and the red text denotes the proposed change to the development standard in order to ensure consistency with the state housing law. Again, in order to comply with the state law, the standard has been removed. Again, in order to comply with the state law, the standard has been removed. A community meeting was held in February to inform the members of public regarding the proposed state required changes to regulations for supportive and transitional housing and emergency shelters and address questions or concerns regarding the updates. During the meeting, staff responded to questions about the effects of proposed state mandated updates on supportive housing service providers and residents. The proposed updates to regulations on supportive housing would facilitate development of supportive housing within the city by increasing the number of zoning districts that allow this type of housing as a permitted use or conditionally permitted use. It should be noted that any new supportive or transitional housing will be required to maintain consistency in design and appearance with other residential units by complying with the applicable development standards for residential units within the same zone, including density, height, floor area, lot coverage, and setbacks. It should also be noted that state density bonus laws will be applicable to special needs housing. Additionally, concerns regarding proposed updates resulting in proximity of emergency shelters to residential neighborhoods and schools were raised by members of public. Currently, emergency shelters are allowed by right in M two general industrial zone and allowed subject to approval of a conditional use permit in M one limited industrial and B C C M Burbank Center Commercial Manufacturing Zones. The proposed Z T A will not make any changes to these standards. Moreover, residential units are not allowed in M one, M two, and B C C M zones and schools are not allowed in M one and M two zones. Planning Board received comments from a member of a public today expressing concerns regarding proximity to supportive and transitional housing, decreasing property value of residential units and increasing crime rates in residential neighborhoods. It should be noted that transitional and supportive housing located in residential zones are required to comply with the development standards, including height, lot coverage, density, and setbacks that govern development of residential units located within the same zone. As a result, such housing will maintain consistency in terms of design and appearance with other residential units. Additionally, the proposed update will promote development of affordable housing throughout the city and help avoid concentration of such housing within a few neighborhoods, which is consistent with the state law, land use element goals of general plan, and city's affordable housing strategy and housing production goals established by the city council in twenty nineteen. Moreover, we have not come across any data that substantiates whether an increase or decrease in crime rate will result from transitional and supportive housing. Noted on this slide are the next steps in the review and processing of the proposed zone text amendment. Subsequent to planning board review tonight and consideration of the draft resolution, it is anticipated that the zone text amendment will be presented at a future meeting before the city council in June and July twenty twenty-one. Staff recommends that planning board adopt following resolution. A resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank recommending the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Burbank amending Title Ten, Chapter One, zoning in order to update the regulations for supportive housing, transitional housing, and emergency shelters consistent with applicable state laws. This concludes the presentation and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any person who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
At this moment, we don't, but we'll give it a couple of minutes for them to come through.
Thank you.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the president, would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Uh, no vice chair.
Does the board have any questions of staff? Board member Razadi, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I have several questions for staff. So who could, who, who can own these homes? So I'm, I'm assuming that for the transitional and supportive housing in R one neighborhoods, who, who would own one? Do you have like a, a makeup of someone that might own that?
Any developer can, can own such housing, for instance, um, for instance, within city of Burbank, the supportive housing that we have, Burbank Housing Association manages the operation of such supportive housing. Any other developer who wants to pursue a project for affordable housing and wants to serve the community by proposing transitional or supportive housing or emergency shelter would be eligible under the state law.
So a developer can buy the property and how many people could he put in the property?
So that would depend on the building department occupancy and also the number of houses or beds the developer would be proposing depending upon the kind of housing that he's proposing.
So if he bought a fifteen hundred square foot house and he added, took out the kitchen and made everything bedrooms, could he have twelve people in there, ten people in there?
Uh, so it, it, it's not a direct answer for that. For instance, if someone buys, it depends on the zoning as well. If someone buys a lot, say in R one zone, then this proposed housing will be a single family housing look alike, will have to comply with all the standards. And depending upon the number of bedrooms, I think the building division would be able to determine how many, how many occupants can occupy that proposed housing.
So what, what are, what are our standards on a single family home? How many bedrooms can a single family home have?
And that depends upon the lot area. The larger the lot, um, the, the property owner can have a larger home, which can result in increased number of bedrooms.
And, and how much, how much are they charging for this? Is there, are they getting, is there state money that they're getting? Or how, how are they getting paid to have these people in their home?
So I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question because I'm, I'm not well versed with the operations. I don't know if the director or senior parent would like to chime in.
Shipper, I can, I can chime in. So we'd be speculating to say, you know, what they're being charged there. They're overseen by different state agencies and there's probably funding that is tied to operation of these type of facilities. But I would anticipate that someone that's undertaking this effort is recovering the cost to provide the service to the people that are occupying it, whether it's through the state, Medicare, or other resources.
Okay. And then has there been any consideration to COVID? So we've all experienced this virus and the potential of having so many people living in such close proximity and now we're going to pass rules to basically cram a lot of people in a small space. So I'm just curious, is that, was that a topic? Was that ever brought up?
Shipper, I can, I can chime in. So I, I think we need to provide a little bit of context here and that is, I think in the staff report and in Shipper's present, Ms. Rajesh's presentation, she mentioned that this was a follow-up to the Housing Element Program number twelve, which is to implement transitional and supportive housing new regulations by a timeframe, uh, being that the Housing Element was adopted back in twenty fourteen, that that was supposed to take effect by twenty seventeen. So we are kind of behind when it came to adopting these regulations. With that said, if these were put in place prior to or even now, anybody that is actually occupying these facilities has to comply with local standards as far as light and air, um, you know, total occupancy, as well as public health requirements. So I believe most recently, council had a question regarding existing facilities where we had multiple people, let's say in a small, uh, small transitional housing facility or large housing facility where actually fire department was doing health checks, just verifying the status. But those limitations would be those imposed either through the building code or health and safety codes as far as separation and then any protocols. There's actually protocols through the state. I'm not specifically aware of what they are, but there's certain protocols as far as how they deal with COVID and provide services to these individuals that are occupying at these locations.
And then can a registered sex offender who's recovering, like an addict, could they be living in one of these homes?
Um, so per the state law, client screening is no longer allowed. It's, it's not a standard that a state can, or city, I'm sorry, a city can enforce. So anybody who needs a house can look for an emergency shelter or supportive housing.
I think to your, to your point, Board Member Razadi, so if we go to page three of the staff report, under the special needs housing definition, there is listed what's called the target population. And I'll just read from it because that's probably the best way to do this is per California Health and Safety Code, section fifty-three two sixty D, target population includes adults with low income, having one or more disabilities, including mental illness, HIV AIDS, substance abuse, or other chronic health conditions, or individuals eligible for service under Lanham Development Disability Services and may, among other populations, include families with children, elderly persons, young adults, aging out of foster care system, individuals exiting out of institutional settings, veterans, or homeless people. So it could be someone coming out of a correctional facility.
Yep. And you know, I, I heard the comment that these are low impacts, which I can completely disagree with factually because I know that we've had a few of these sober living facilities in Burbank. I know the police have been out to those for fights and drug dealers and all kinds of other issues. I can tell you for a fact that one of them where one of the residents hung themselves in broad daylight within six blocks of a school while the kids were walking home. So there are impacts and the fact that we don't see, we see the sunny side of this, but I don't see the other side of this. The numbers, the statistics is kind of scary. And then lastly, we're talking about making things affordable and what we're doing. And, and I know that I probably sound like a broken record because I I, I say this all the time, but we are taking away housing so people can buy housing for profit and make money on people that are down on their luck and build a state large amounts of money. And I don't think that, you know, we should have in, in our R one neighborhoods an operational business such as this. So I don't have any other questions, but I thank you for your time.
Madam Vice Chair?
Please go ahead, Board Member Razadi.
Thank you. I want to allude to the no checks, no background checks and so forth and so on. And I want to ask a question regarding there, there are instances where, let's say, someone who has HIV or other underlying illnesses may, uh, would be a sex offender and may qualify for one of these locations. How does it further the interest of the community by not having this type of background checks? I mean, there's, there's, there's a school within, I don't know, within five blocks of any house kind of in, in Burbank. Let's say ten blocks, maybe I'm exaggerating a bit, but there are schools all over the place. And how, how is it in the best interest of Burbank residents to be implementing this type of zone text amendments? Could, could you help me out with that? How does this further our community's interest?
Oh, thank you for your question, Board Member. So the whole point, the intent behind the state law is to make sure that such affordable housing is built throughout the city and is not restricted within a certain area to avoid predominance of such housing within a certain area and further the fair housing intent that the state law has. So that's the reason why such housing per the state law is required to be treated as residential use by all the local jurisdictions. And the state also mandates that all these development standards that are applicable to any other residential use would govern development of transitional and supportive housing. And regarding emergency shelter, those would not be allowed in R one and R one H zones or any other residential zone. Those would be still restricted to M one zone and with a C U P in B C C M and M two zone. Currently, that's how it is within our code and there, there's no changes being proposed to that.
If, if I may add, Vice Chair, just a little bit more and I, I just want to acknowledge that we, we understand the concerns and it's not, this is not a construct which we, you know, decided to make these amendments, you know, on our own wholesale. Ms. Rajesh and planning staff actually went back and checked with the Department of Housing and Community Development just to confirm the requirements. We actually reviewed the segments of the code that are actually presented to you tonight for consideration to adopt or recommend adoption to council and to assure that they're in compliance with applicable state law. And the reality of it is that what you see in front of you, including the removal of client restrictions when it comes to screening and intake is a direct result of what the regulations are in effect now and also with feedback from the state to ensure that, hey, can we provide these, can we leave these requirements in place? And the response was an affirmative, no, to comply with state law, they have to be removed. So what's before you, I empathize with the concerns that are being brought forth, but the reality of it is that what is in front of you is a set of regulations that have been updated to comply with those requirements and to assure that we have a code compliant and state compliant housing element, both currently and as we go to seek an update from the state and certification from the state, this program needs to be implemented and to implement this program, we have to update the code as presented to you tonight.
Thank you very much.
So am I, am I to understand that regardless of our debate or regardless of our concerns or the regardless of the issues raised by the citizens, this is basically take it or leave it thing? Is that, is that what it's boiling down to?
So, so if I could, Mr. Ramirez, Madam Chair, this is a legal requirement. The transitional and supportive housing regulations require this action. It's been required since twenty fourteen. And if these amendments are not made, the city's ordinance will not comply with state law. So that's, that's the, that's the bottom line. In terms of Burbank's experience In terms of Burbank's experience with transitional and supportive housing, I agree with Board Member Rosati that there was at least one fairly known sober living facility that was problematic. My understanding is that police visited that facility for all of the different legal issues that the occupants of that facility had, and it ceased to be a problem. But largely, the city's experience with transitional housing are the projects that are being operated, developed and operated by Burbank Housing Corporation, which is emancipated minors, victims of domestic violence, and families at risk, either homeless families or at risk of homelessness, including some supportive services, I believe, which are still operated by Family Promise. So largely, our experience with projects that fall into the transitional housing category and housing with supportive services have been the, the affordable housing projects that the city has seen. But all of the concerns about group homes exist in law whether or not you adopt this ordinance. The requirement for six or fewer with very limited permitting, those are ongoing challenges that we face because of state presumption. These are very difficult projects. However, people who are Penal Code Section 290 sex registrants, they have restrictions on where they can live. They must register with the police department. So I can only imagine the authors of these bills, of these laws, that we are tonight here to request recommendation of this ordinance so the city can be in compliance, that they believe those other measures are sufficient. But as a matter of law, state law does require this treatment, that transitional housing and supportive housing be subject to no restrictions other than the residential uses that are permitted in the same zone.
What, what is, if I may, a couple of more questions, Mr. Rosati. What's the percentage of Burbank residents utilizing these housing services? Do we, do we have an, do we have a number for that?
I don't believe we have a number for that. I mean, as far as the total population being, you know, 108,000, and you've got, you know, you know, the BHC running, you know, multiple facilities, it's, it's got to be less than 1%.
No, I mean, are the residents of these transitional housing and then other elements, are they Burbank residents? Do you have to be a Burbank residence to use one in Burbank or you could be from anywhere?
I don't, I don't believe there's a limitation that it has to be people that reside solely within the city. I believe there's requirements under, that operational requirements for each one of these operators that they have to allow, people that qualify both as far as target population and income to be in these, in these locations.
So it could be even someone from out of state who just moved here. Is that possible?
In a similar fashion as a Section 8 applicant could be from out of state that becomes eligible and there's funding available to them, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a federal program. But anyway, Mr. Madugal, what is the, what is the ramification of not complying with the state's requirement?
Well, first and foremost would be not having a certified housing element. Not having a certified housing element means that your general plan is not state compliant. And if your general plan isn't state compliant and your zoning isn't consistent, then you can have legal problems with enforcement of your codes.
I mean, would, would it be that the state would come and sue the city of Burbank to try and enforce these?
I, I can't speculate on the number of parties that can sue the city, but it certainly opens the city up from more than just the state.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions by the board members?
Mr. McDougall. Why we do this then? I mean, if the state is going to take away our local control, why don't we just, why do we have this planning board meeting? Why don't they just post it in the town square what the rules are? And then we don't, I, I don't understand if, if we're, if we don't have a say in our community and how we want to shape it, and we're not as a city willing to fight back, at what, I mean, at what point do we say, is it, if the state said, hey, you have to now share your house with another individual, are we just going to comply with that? I mean, at what point do we get to say we have zoning laws on our books and we wanted to adhere to it? Why, why have the meeting? Why have the discussion? Why have staff do all this if it's, if they're saying, this is it, take it?
So my answer, Board Member Rosati, is because the state does still largely leave a tremendous amount of home rule to the cities. And these are some of the more high profile ways in which the state takes that back under their general category of statewide emergency for housing. As long as I've, I've been a planner, Fred, maybe not as long as me, I started as a planner over 30 years ago and then started practicing law. And the, the housing laws in this state since well before I started all said that the shortage of housing and availability of affordable housing is a matter of statewide concern. And so these laws have been tightening and tightening. And there's special categories of housing that cities have been very good at excluding, and the state is trying to eliminate those barriers. This is, I recall we had this discussion probably seven, eight years ago because the general plan was out in 2013 in draft form. And it is, I think in Burbank's experience, it's largely been a concern, but these types of projects have generally been very supportive of both residents in the community, like the emancipated minors, and supportive of residents that qualify for affordable housing.
Do we have any other questions by Board Member Rosati? Yes.
So, Mr. Madugal, based on your comment, from what I understand is for 30 years, the state has been concerned about housing, and yet for 30 years with all the regulations and whatever passed, they still haven't been able to resolve housing issues. So is this just basically a procedural thing that we're going through and say, yes, we do recommend it to the city council for adoption? Is, is that where we are right now so that we can cut to the chase and, and not take up everyone's time?
You have the freedom to vote however you choose. The city is, staff is making their best professional recommendation on how the city of Burbank can comply with state law.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions by board members? Board Member Gamboa, please.
I had one clarifying thing. Thank you for all the information and background, and I think the board raises some valid questions. But just one clarification about the background checks. It doesn't prohibit any user from doing background checks, just they can't deny them housing because of those checks. Is that, or the certain, that, those certain conditions, is that correct?
To, to your point, Board Member Gamboa, the city can't impose it as a requirement, but would that preclude an operator from doing their own due diligence unless it's, unless it's a limitation by the state upon their license? You're right, they, they may have other screening components, but it's not something that we could codify and impose to them through this prescribed process of the zoning code.
Thanks.
Any other questions by board members?
I have a few questions for staff. When is our deadline to implement this regulation, state law?
It should have been done back in 2017.
And what happened since 2017 until 2021 that we did not comply?
I've been here since 2017, at the beginning of it, and really it's just been, we just haven't had the staff to be able to undertake every program that needs to be done. So here we are, we're at the point where we have to update our housing element, and this is an unmet program, so we have to comply with this requirement. That's why it's before you all today to consider and make a recommendation. And the, the program effort is to undertake this in combination with the concurrent update to the housing element so that when the, when the state looks at our housing element and goes through and tries to check the boxes on all the programs, they come to this one and they say, this 2017 effort that was supposed to be completed, has it been done? And the hope is that we'll be able to go forward and say, it's, it's, it's been reviewed by the board, there's a recommendation that's been made to council, and council's now considering it. So it's going to be happening during that period of review of our current, our, our current update to the housing element.
So there is no penalties to not approving this proposal or the ordinance and to make modifications? If we decide to make modifications to the proposed ordinance, how do we proceed? Do we have to have the city present, the city staff present city of Burbank and communicate with the state of California? Or do we have to reach out to our congressman? How do we modify this ordinance? Because I personally think that this ordinance, with all due respect to all human beings and everyone in need of transitioned housing, needs modifications in different areas, especially extending it to residential and single families. And I would like to know which zone currently is exempt on this ordinance from the supportive and transitional housing. Do we have any zone that is exempt from this ordinance?
So I, I think there's a couple of questions within your question. And, and I think what you're, what's presented to you tonight is a direct reflection of what the statutory requirements are under state law. So in other words, what's in front of you is amendments to our code to ensure that our zoning regulations comply with the state requirements and the statutes that Ms. Rajesh has included in the packet. If you were looking at wanting to change what those requirements are, then those changes have to happen at a state level. Those statutory requirements would change, and the result of that, right, would be a state mandate to then update your regulations once again with different requirements. So we understand, and we, it's not that we don't hear what you're saying, we empathize with the situation and the concerns, but what is in front of you is the requirements as currently necessary to comply with state law. So everything that's been added, proposed to be added, everything that's been proposed to be striked from the current regulations would ensure that at the end of the day, we have a set of zoning regulations that address state law when it comes to transitional, supportive and emergency shelters within the city. Now, as far as the list of land uses, you'd have to go back to the actual regulation, the ordinance, the draft, and I believe Shipra, maybe you can walk them through that when it comes to the strike through. Excuse me, that shows both, shows both the existing zoning regulations and then the updates to the land use tables for both R1, R2, R3, and so on and so.
And if I could just, before Shipra does that, I want to read to you from the statute, which is the statute on housing elements, where we had to make this pledge to get our housing element certified back in 2014. It's Government Code Section 65583, subsection C3. And it says, this is as to what the housing element is supposed to do, "Address and where appropriate and legally possible, remove governmental and non-governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing, including housing for all income levels and housing for persons with disabilities. The program shall remove constraints to and provide reasonable accommodations for housing designed for, intended for occupancy by, or with supportive services for persons with disabilities." And then the primary sentence here that this evening's meeting is concerned with, it says, "Transitional housing and supportive housing shall be considered a residential use of property and shall be subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type in the same zone." And what that last sentence means is anywhere, what the state is telling Burbank and every other city in the state is, where in your code you allow residential use of land, you shall allow transitional and supportive housing, subject to the same requirements only. So the text that Shipra and Lisa and Fred put together tonight simply adds to the use table in most cases and makes where residential is permitted, makes transitional and supportive housing permitted. So the basic change are those in the use table that you have, and it's to comply with that very, what I consider to be a very clear mandate to cities to treat transitional and supportive housing exactly the same as any other residential use in the zone.
And Shipra, maybe if you can use Exhibit B, where we show the red line, just so that the board can follow along.
So if you can see on my screen, this is the use table for non-residential, I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see the screen with the Exhibit B. So this is the non-residential use table. Previously, supportive housing was allowed in C2, C3, and C4 zone and transitional housing as well, housing as well, within approval of a CUP. But now with the state law, both supportive housing and transitional housing will be treated as a residential use, like the city attorney mentioned. And wherever the residential use is allowed, all those zones would, would have to allow supportive housing and transitional housing, either with a CUP, or if the supportive housing project meets the state's specified criteria, they'll have to be allowed by right irrespective of the fact that the residential uses within certain zones require a CUP. Having said that, within residential zones, previously, we did not allow supportive and transitional housing within R2 zone. With this update, now we'll be required to allow supportive and transitional housing as a permitted use in R2 zone to comply with the requirements of the state law. And similarly, in R1 and R1H zone, supportive and transitional using, supportive and transitional housing will be allowed by right, just as any other residential use.
Thank you. I have another question. Well, if we have a gated community, will that gated community, if specifically noted in their homeowners association guidelines, be exempt from transitional housing if they decide so? Or state law actually overrules any micro rules in place statewide? If there is a gated community, the HOA guideline says that none of these houses are allowed to have any type of transitional housing. But the state law says that transitional housing are permitted in any R1 building whatsoever. Which one supersedes the other one? Which one overrules the other, the other one?
Maybe I can, maybe I can start and, and Mr. McDougall can correct me if I'm wrong, but even in a gated community, the underlying zoning would list it at either R1 or if there was a gated community in R1H. Those are the ones that come to mind. So, you know, let's just say Burbank community is R1. If it's an R1 zoned and gated community, the same requirements would apply. So if, if there is a supportive or transitional facility that wants to operate in one of these structures, then the reality is that they, state law would preempt their, their bylaws. With that said, I think there was a similar discussion with ADUs, right, within, in these facilities, and the same thing held true is that if it was residentially zoned and ADUs were allowed, unless it was in a Fire Mountain Zone where we put specific restrictions, that was something that could be considered as well.
Thank you. And last question, which of the neighboring cities have already adopted and implemented this state law, to this state, if you know?
Yeah, I don't have a number, but I will tell you that this requirement, since it is a state mandate, is going to be a question that all the cities that are doing their housing element update, especially everybody in, in the Southern California region and in the SCAG region, Southern California Association of Government Region, is going to have to address as they're processing their housing element updates before the state. So all the cities are going to be asked, the question is, do you have a code compliant provision specifically dealing with transitional and supportive housing?
Thank you. And SCAG is only for monitoring the state laws being dictated to the cities. It's not actually representative if one or more cities are in a position of one of the guidelines or the ordinances. Is there any coalition or alliance? Is there any coalition or alliance for Southern California cities or California cities in the entire state that reaches out to the state when they're opposing parts of an ordinance or an ordinance as a whole? Do we have any such organization that City of Burbank is a part of and is has expresses its voice to either oppose or modify guidelines of an ordinance? Do we have any organization or do RV participate in any coalition like that?
I'm not aware of a coalition per se. I mean, there's different organizations. There's League of California Cities that, you know, you have mayors, council members, you know, appointed representatives that, you know, reach out and have conversations with, you know, advocacy members within the league that then go and, you know, advocate at the state level for existing regulations, proposed regulations, or things that need to be changed. But as far as an existing advocacy group to go out and, let's say, advocate to make changes to the regulations that you see in front of you, I'm not aware of one that is in existence, you know, immediately off the top of my head that I could refer to, but I don't know, Joe, if you're aware of one.
So as Board Member Rosati mentioned, when there is an ordinance proposed by the state of California, we basically have no voice. Whether it is approved, we just have to comply. Where is the point that we oppose an ordinance or make modification to an ordinance?
So Board Member, I think we want to make a, well, I would like to make a distinction between what's being considered tonight and the requirements. So the regulations have been approved by the state and now they're being mandated and here we are trying to address that issue. That doesn't preclude, even as this set of regulations, right, are being considered by you and or at a future date by the council, nothing precludes the city to reach out to assembly members, senators, you know, which we do quite a bit, and advocate for changes in regulations. And ultimately, right, those can be championed at the state level and there could be discussion and ultimately proposal of updates to assembly bills or senate bills. I mean, that happens all the time. So that that effort of advocacy is not, it's not like it ceases to exist because we have to deal with this issue and address it. All I'm saying is that those two are are two separate issues, right? It's the issue of our code having to comply with requirements now to deal with the statutory requirements that are in effect now, but nothing precludes the city city representatives to advocate to their legislators to say, hey, maybe we need to take a look at this and amend the regulations. But until that happens, until that is approved at the state level and adopted by the governor, we have to operate under the conditions we have in place now. And that is, the here and now is, our code is out of compliance with state regulations that Mr. McDougal and staff has noted. And to bring those into compliance, staff is recommending that we make these updates. And the updates have been confirmed with the state and with state and with the legislative bills that are in front of you to ensure that they're in compliance with state law. And what that then means is that we continue to have a housing element that is in compliance with the requirements of the state because we're now meeting one of the final programs that's necessary under the current housing element.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions by board members? I now declare the hearing closed and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
Madam Chair, ma'am.
Board Member Rosati, yes.
I won't be able to support this and I will not be able to recommend this to council. Let me let me say, I won't be able to support the transitional or the supportive housing, but I would be able to support the emergency shelter. And just for the supportive and the transitional housing, I just, I don't think we have enough information or analysis of what these regulations are going to do to our R1 neighborhoods. You know, the state mandate, I think, conflicts with the latest order. Again, we keep saying we need housing, yet we keep giving housing to the developers so they can make money and they take it away from the people that need it. And I know I sound like a broken record, but it's happening. This is this is what I do for a living. I'm watching it happen every day. And if if somebody thought that ADUs were a good thing, well, go try to rent one in Burbank for $3,000 because it hasn't done a darn thing but made the developers turn a residential, single-family home into a duplex in some of the best places in Burbank. So I can tell you that just for a fact, I've seen, I've witnessed and seen and watching it happen. I think this latest, these latest amendments conflict with our R1 neighborhood designation. We should not be operating businesses in our R1 neighborhoods. I don't think there's been enough outreach. I get, every other day, I get an email about Tin Horn Flats. I haven't received one email regarding this. And I think most people who own a home in Burbank have no idea that this is happening. I, they don't even know the ADU laws. I get people calling me saying, what can I do about this? This guy's building this big house behind my house. It's like, nothing. He had no idea. And I don't think they know anything about this either. You know, I, and I must, I have a big soft heart and I would definitely be for something like this if it was one individual recovering in a house and it and there wasn't a big corporation making a lot of money off of it. Just one individual in a house recovering with dignity, but stuffing a bunch of people in a home like a frat house and making money off that, there's there's nothing dignified about that. So we can call it all we want, supportive, transitional, but what you're really doing is using people so other people can make money. And you're doing that in our R1 neighborhoods where people like me and other people in Burbank have worked their entire life for an investment where now they could potentially be stuck next to one of these facilities and there's nothing they can do. And I know we're told over and over and over and over that there's nothing we can do, but at some point, someone's going to listen. Someone's going to listen. And I hope it's soon because I know you all laugh when I say, well, maybe someday the state will start divvying up our land and giving it away to other people. Maybe then people will listen because it could happen. It's happening. It's actually happening before our eyes. They're chipping away at our codes, taking away our local control, and it needs to stop. And I don't know how to make it stop. I don't know where we take a stand, but we need to take a stand. I'm a big no.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may. I think the.
I'm sorry, I'm on mute. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I think this Zone Text Amendment is similar to the ADU provisions that basically were shoved down cities' throats. It's basically, I'm not in support of it. I'll make it brief. You can't have zoning and then you can't have an R1 zoning. For all these years, you've been telling people, hey, this is a single-family residence zone. You can build one house on here. And then suddenly converted to some sort of a commercial establishment where you have people going in and out, where you got people on short stays, you know, where you got, I mean, let's take the example of the Airbnb and all these other things that have popped up. I don't think people signed up for that. I mean, it just makes no sense. If the single-family residence was taken out of these equations where you've conducted this type of supportive housing or transitional housing in more commercial settings, it's a business. This is a business. The only difference is you're housing people instead of inventory. That's what they're doing. And I mean, there's no difference between if I have, and I don't mean that in the, it's basically for a company, that's what this is. Instead of having inventory and selling products out of that location, now I'm just housing people and collecting a check from the government. So in that regard, I don't think it's a fit for R1 zone neighborhoods. I think it would be, and this, and I don't even buy into this nonsense that, well, you know, we're doing it so everybody shares it instead of it being concentrated in certain areas. Maybe it should be concentrated in certain areas. If you want to provide this type of, the government's concerned to, and there's a need for this type of housing and planning, then I'm concentrated in certain parts of areas, not dump it on everyone and then change the nature of, you know, some of the zones that are that have been on the books since the inception of this city and inception of other cities. So I'm not in support of this and I can't make the recommendation to the city council to adopt it.
Thank you very much, Board Member Artenian. Board Member Gumboa, please.
Just, just as Mr. McDougal pointed out, about 30 years of this housing, these housing issues and these housing problems that we're trying to deal with and this law that's that's been, what, seven years trying to come into compliance with. At the end of the day, it's it's a little bit of the chickens coming home to roost. You know, there's so much, so many decades spent keeping people out and keeping things a certain way that it's just the pressure's too much. And that's where the state comes in. That's where these prices come in. You know, that's where that's where everything kind of stems from. So you can go back to 30 years ago, Burbank downzoning. You can go back to restrictive covenant covenants, you know, R1 zones to begin with. So it's a, you know, it's great while it works, but then eventually it doesn't work and then this stuff happens. So, you know, I, it's, you know, maybe it's not ideal for some folks, but, you know, people, people need a place to live and, you know, if we can ban renting in all R1 period, then that would probably ban, you know, these uses too because you can't, if you can't rent there, it's the same as, you know, you can't rent all across the zone, you can't rent the supportive housing either. So, you know, I think, I think it's, it's the, we got, we got Blackstone renting for profit and we got nonprofits like Burbank Housing Corporation renting things. So I think this idea about these corporations getting rich off of supportive housing is, is, I'm, I'm not saying they don't make money because it's, it's, it's making money, but enough to operate, but it's, it's kind of, I think it's a little overblown. You know, I think there's legitimate, you know, neighborhood concerns, but nothing's stopping, you know, a big family from moving in, nothing's stopping, you know, a bunch of people from moving in a house that is as it is now, renting at market rate. So, you know, those are issues that all we have to deal with because of the decades of these planning decisions. So it's all coming home to roost. So as, as I, I think it should just go. I don't know why, again, I agree with with Mr. Rosati about why are we here for this, but, you know, in so much as we have to approve it, I would vote to approve it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Board Member Rosati?
There's a big difference between Burbank Housing Corporation and the rest. Burbank Housing Corporation's nonprofit, they, they take blighted properties in blighted areas and turn them around. Battery women's shelters, they closely, closely screen and monitor all their residents. There's a big difference between Burbank Housing Corporation, they're in R2 and R3 neighborhoods. There's a huge difference between what they do and what others are doing out there that I've seen.
Do you have some that you can point to that we can just be aware of when they come in?
Others what?
The other businesses that you say are the problem. I mean, like.
Well, all right, so there was one that was operating on the corner of Beachwood and Clark where the police were there 12 times a month and a guy's hanging in the backyard from a rope at 3:00 in the afternoon when the kids are walking through the alley from school. That's one. So there's, there's tons of these.
Shooting up in, up in the hills in Burbank in an R1, in just a regular home.
What does that have to do with what we're talking about? This is operating a business. You're operating a business in an R1 neighborhood for profit. When you're, when you have a shooting, it has nothing to do with operating a business, has nothing to do with, with any of those things.
So then there's a plumber that has all their plumber cars, the construction cars in their driveway, do they need to not park there because they're burning their business out of their house?
Mr. Gumboa, a plumber lives in the house with his family. It's not a for-profit situation where they're cramming multiple people in a home for profit and people with issues, people with drug addiction that are coming into your neighborhood that you just bought a home for $1.2 million for. And look, if that's, you have the right to vote any way you want. If that's the community you want to live in, great. That's not the community that I want to live in.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may.
Board Member Artenian, yes, please go ahead.
The, I think Mr. McDougal's experience where 30 years we've had issues with housing is because of the restrictive approach cities and municipalities took to development. And the restrictive approach they took, I think, if I may, be so bold as to say that the politicians saw that as a good opportunity to, to exercise greater control and basically for large developers to come and, you know, kiss the ring so that they can get that permit so they can build. So, but for if, if it was left up to regular market conditions, I think it would have been far better than all these regulations that were passed stifling the creation of housing and so forth. And that's what has come home to roost. The politicians' approach to restrictive and restrictive code and statute so that you can, they can basically do the wink and the nod for campaign support or other support so they can get elected another term and so forth and so on. It's not because there's not sufficient land, it's not because there isn't sufficient developers out there, it's because they wanted to have control so that they can benefit from that production, from that business, putting that larger, the larger amount of units or the bigger building or the bigger development. So, and now to try and say we are in a jam, well, the problem was created by the politicians and now supposedly they're coming in to save us. So that's where we're at. That's why we're here and for no other reason because it would have been, why downzone it? Why restrict development? And, and why, after doing that for those many years, why reverse course now? To try and come up with these other ways of distorting the codes and the statute where different zones have been developed and different zones? Why not, why not bring and put a factory to produce, let's say, I don't know, furniture in the middle of an R1 zone? Why not do that? Let's do that. That, that will solve the furniture shortage that people are experiencing. So at one point, it becomes unreasonable to argue and say, well, this is needed where the problem was, had been generated by the same people who are saying it is needed. No, it's not needed. They, they could carve out areas to have this type of services and provide this type of services. It doesn't necessarily have to come in the middle of R1 zone. It doesn't have to. It doesn't necessarily have to come in the middle of R one zone. It doesn't have to, that doesn't need to happen. Just as, just as they're able to say, well, you know, let's, we're going to take off the restrictions off of our one zones. If you can do that, you can do that. So what stops the state from saying tomorrow, hey, you know what? Uh, if you can, if you can, uh, uh, we need these other services, so let's put it, you can do it in an R one zone. Why don't you open up grocery stores in R one zones and put our grocery stores in the middle of our one zones where they do, let's say, uh, uh, I don't know, they have a meat cutting factory in the back or something to that effect. So it just, there's a reason why there are different zones in a city. Because there's a need to separate certain segments of use from other segments of use. For safety, for protection, for convenience, for rest, you know, comfort. So to, to try and now distort that under the guise of, oh, well, we need this, so we're going to throw everything out, including the, we're going to throw out the baby with the bathwater. Anyway, I mean, I think I've spoke too long. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
I mean, you're not, you're not, you're not saying anything different than I'm saying. I'm just saying R one is a restrictive thing that's a, uh, uh, a, a restriction on this development. It's the exact same thing as, as downzoning or anything else. It's just, it's a restriction on what people do. And just want to point out that you're basically comparing affordable supportive housing to like a meat rendering plant. Like people, that, that's essentially what you just did. So it, it's, you can separate the uses, but a residential use, red, different densities in residential uses is still residential uses. Then residential uses versus commercial versus industrial, it's a little bit different. So it's a little disingenuous to kind of make those comparisons for, for the zoning. Like I get, I get your apprehensions. I get you don't like a lot of people nearby. You're afraid of the crime, you're afraid of whatever. Like, I get it, it makes sense. I've, I've, I've seen, I've seen, you know, folks that, that you probably wouldn't be happy with living near you. And having a million dollar house means you're going to be, be, uh, kept clear of allow those people for the most part. Um, and this is attacking that, that, that safety, you guys. I get how, how, how disconcerting this can be for you guys and, and I, I understand that. I'm not trying to, to, to discount your feelings, uh, but people, th- these are, these are, these are places for people to live. And these are places for people who need a place to live, to live. So I, it's, 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 uh, it, it's gotta, it's got, they gotta live in places where people can live. You know, people can live in residential neighborhoods, that's where people should be able to live. Now, I think, you know, you're talking about jamming people in. I don't know, uh, what the, there's no, the density in R one is just one house. But there's no limit to the size of houses and we've had this problem with mansionization and giant houses that people have a problem with. We never sorted that out. We never figured, we, we could have easily just said, your, your, your max square footage is like a thousand square feet. Boom. No mansionization. It's a house for a normal, small family, but we've, we've allowed it to be whatever we want it to be there.
No, we didn't. We have a mansionization law. I worked on it for three years with the city of Burbank. You can only build on a certain amount of size of your lot. You cannot build more than forty percent. And you, there's height restrictions, there's setback requirements.
There are bedroom restrictions? Their bedroom, what's the bedroom limitation?
It depends on, like she said, the code and, and the size of the house. But we do have restrictions on what you used to build in Burbank, which was on almost sixty percent of your lot, and dramatically changed that. So for instance, on a sixty seven fifty square foot lot, the biggest house you're going to build is twenty two hundred square feet. You can't build four thousand, you can't build thirty five.
And this is for the, the, these housing you're talking about. This is, this is as big as the housing they're going to build. And they stop to have a kitchen because it's a housing, it's residential.
Mr. Gamboa.
Mr. Gamboa, I think.
We're, we're just not returning single family homes in to businesses where somebody is down on their luck and they're living in a house because they have an addiction or whatever. Meanwhile, the state is paying some corporation a lot of money to house that person. Meanwhile, it's eroding and destroying that neighborhood because of all the crime and all the other things that would go on, going to go on at that house. So we just have a difference in opinion and philosophy on what a, a, a residential neighborhood should be.
It's, it's not, the issue is, it is not, we don't want, there's an apprehension about people living in houses. That's not the issue. The issue is, the apprehension is you lose the community. You lose the neighborhood where you have this type of housing embedded within that R one zone. So you do not have that connection between neighbors. You do not have that, uh, let's say, the, the fabric of that neighborhood is not the same. You have people going in and out of that house every six months, every year or whatever the case may be. You have, you may have that, uh, resident loaded up to maximum, whatever that number is. We don't even know what the number is. If they built, if they have three bedrooms, they may put three people to each bedroom. That's nine people in that particular house. Now these nine people are out on the street roaming or maybe they're in the backyard roaming or whatever the case may be. It destroys the fabric of the neighborhood, just as we want compliance with, uh, general designs as far as the, the homes go in a neighborhood. There is certain compliance and expectation when you are going into an R one neighborhood. And as far as, as far as the issue goes, as I mentioned, these restrictions, the restrictive covenants and restrictive coding, uh, that the downsized zoning were done by, by, uh, politicians or governments. And now the argument is we don't have enough housing, so we're going to utilize every single house everywhere to do whatever we want to do. No, that's not the case. You cannot come back and say, you know what, I've created a problem and I, and I'm going to piggyback the solution on your shoulders.
Different people, they're different, they're, they're, the politicians, the, the Burbank Council in the eighties is not the state legislature in twenty twenty. It's a different people, different eras, different problems. Like, I get what you're saying, but like, that's, that argument doesn't hold weight. Like, it's just, it's just, it's a, it's a silly argument to say, the local politicians are neighbors. They're people, they're voting in, in our interest and the interests of the R one neighborhoods at the time. And now the state legislature, who's not beholden to those constituents the same way, thirty, forty years later are having different, dealing with different issues. So I, it's just, just, I get, I get what, your other arguments are better. Just stop with that, that the politicians are doing this thing.
Do you know, do you know what lobbying effort went into, uh, these changes? Do you have any idea what, who lobbied for these changes?
I, I don't. It's like six, seven years ago.
All right. All right. So I'll leave it at that too.
All right. Well, I'm done. And thank you for your, for hearing me out and, and I, and, and thank you for sharing your concerns too. I, I do definitely appreciate hearing your perspectives.
I think at the end of the day, if you ask Burbank residents who live in an R one zone, they, I would overwhelmingly, over fifty percent, without even taking a poll, would oppose this type of measure. So, uh, I, as a representative, uh, who is, who has a fiduciary responsibility and a duty to those residents sitting on the planning board and of course to the code that's in place, uh, cannot support, uh, these type of, uh, I guess, uh, amendments. So, but anyway, having said that, thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Adakunian. Thank you, Board Member Gamboa. Do we have any other, um, comments by board members? I would like to add a, um, a few comments. Um, these programs are run by state revenue. And, um, due to the high property value in Burbank, especially in R one and R one H, uh, the hillside area. Um, the program administrators will have to have more occupants. And, uh, no occupant, um, um, calculation or the maximum occupants have been identified here. As, uh, Board Member, uh, Gamboa said, anybody can turn a single family to a house with as many, uh, number of bedrooms as they want. There is no restriction. Especially for this type of project because they don't require parking. And, um, in regular single family, Board Member Rosati said that out of like a six thousand square foot lot, you can get twenty two hundred. But the reason that the number of, um, bedrooms usually do not grow more than three or four is because it impacts the parking ratio. But, um, here we need to have maximum, uh, number of rooms in a, uh, facility in a house. And, um, also the maximum, uh, number of occupants. That needs to be clarified. Also, um, on the target population, there, there is, um, some of the, um, uh, type of the, um, occupants have been identified here. But I need to learn more about Landerman Developmental Disability Services Act. And also another thing that, um, the reality of this ordinance is not looking at is, um, um, the implementation. We see opposition to this ordinance. And I would love everyone that requires transitional housing to actually find a place. As, uh, Board Member Gamboa said, to, they need a place to live, to live. And this is the purpose of this, um, ordinance. But in reality, because of the deficiencies and, um, uh, vague areas, it will result in a reverse way. Those, um, occupants going to live in one of these transitional housing in R one or R one H area, even multifamily, because multifamily is now being added to, uh, the zonings allowing these type of housing. But no one talks about that because probably, uh, multifamily is, um, um, associated with, um, major part of the, um, occupants non-owner. So, um, probably there is less voice and less opposition. But in R one and R one H, the, we, we see opposition. This targets the residents of the transitional housing and this is not good. It will impact their development process. They're, they're becoming residents of these transitional housing to, um, uh, live better and experience life in a better way. And that's the goal. We're, we're trying to make that happen and assist everyone that's in need of these housing. But we don't want to impact their, um, um, lifestyle or anything that actually, um, helps them to, um, be better and live in a better way. This state law and this ordinance is just throwing those type of residents into the areas that they're not welcome. And this is a challenge. So I believe that this ordinance needs more, um, uh, study and needs modification. Another concern that I have is the safety. One of the texts on exhibit B thirteen that I read about the security just says that emergency shelter providers must submit a written security plan prior to beginning operation. That includes the hours of operation, lighting, intake discharge hours. And, um, security plan must include contact information for an onsite twenty-four hour manager. I don't think that just a contact information for a twenty-four hour onsite manager is enough, especially if the decision, the final decision is to bring in transitional housing to R one or into residential zoning. Most of us that work, um, remotely now going to different offices have to, um, do online applications for, um, health check. I believe, um, it would be a good idea to have one of those, uh, live login applications to monitor visitors to these places and to the transitional housing and, um, give access to City of Burbank or Police Department for better monitoring. These are the little things that I believe needs more attention. Other than that, as, uh, Board Member Rosati said, I, I am also in support of transitional housing in M zone. Uh, sorry, in, uh, shelters in M zone. But bringing in transitional housing to residential area definitely needs more study and more attention. So unfortunately, I am unable to support this, but I would like to, um, recommend that we, um, look at a revised version, um, if, um, uh, this could be revised to modify and include more information. So I would like to, um, request for, do we, it's time for a motion. Um, Mr. Ramirez, um, how do I proceed for the motion? Um, a yes or no on the ordinance and, um, a yes or no on bringing back this, uh, ordinance with modifications? How do we proceed?
Well, the item before you, the recommendation is to consider the resolution that's in front of you. So my suggestion would be, and this is for the council, the board to decide, but to vote on the resolution. If you vote to deny the resolution, then that's what will go forward, is the vote to deny with, uh, a, you know, the minutes that would show the administrative record of the reasons why you denied it.
Question. Can we break up the vote or, or is it just, just this? Can we break up the, the, the emergency shelter portion?
Since you're making a recommendation, you could make a recommendation on the different aspects of it and make it part of your vote. So if you're recommending to deny the transitional supportive, but you want to recommend that the, um, for an example, the homeless section go forward, you can do that. I mean, that's just how you want to, uh, you know, whoever phrases the motion and then whoever seconds it if they, if they agree to it.
I'll, I'll give it a stab. If you, if you want, Madam Chair.
What is your motion?
My motion is going to be to decline the supportive and traditional housing and approve the emergency shelter part of the resolution. I guess that's my motion.
But before we proceed, we want to make sure that, um, something that happened in, uh, one of our past meetings doesn't happen again. If this is, uh, the only motion, um, uh, Mr. McDougall, how do we hear all motions before, um, accepting one?
You don't, you don't, um, develop a list of motions. A motion is made, that's the motion that gets acted on. If it, so a motion is made, a motion is seconded. There's nothing else to act on until you act on that motion. It can be withdrawn or a substitute motion can be made, but you work incrementally. You don't, you're not going to make four motions, have four seconds. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. So it's one motion at a time. Uh, staff is going to need more direction if you want amendments because this ordinance complies with the law and staff can't really develop alternatives that don't comply with the law. So you'll have to be very specific on that. As for Mr. Rosati's motion, which hasn't been seconded yet, um, it could be to simply move the resolution. Uh, a, a motion to adopt a resolution of the planning board recommending the city council adopt an ordinance of the City of Burbank, amending Title Ten in order to update the regulations for. And if you're only going to take action on emergency shelters, then you could strike supportive housing, transitional housing and the word and. And then you direct staff to advance or that the planning board's recommendation would only be with regard to the changes to the, um, emergency shelters. Um, and, and that's something that staff should be able to look at because they're, they're two separate parts really. There's the transitional supportive, which are together.
And this, yes, emergency shelter.
Yeah. Unless you want to try to find time to separate it, I think that, that's clear enough for staff.
That would be my motion.
Ma- uh, Madam Vice Chair, if I may, uh, I mean, is it possible just to vote on the resolution as is? And then I think, I mean, I mean, the record is clear as to where we stand on the motion, uh, we stand.
Well, some, someone has to make a motion and Board Member Rosati has made a motion to adopt the resolution striking the supportive and transitional housing. So that's the only motion that's been made. It fails if there's no second.
Can I make a motion to adopt the, the resolution as presented?
Okay. So first the chair needs to ask if there's any second for Rosati's motion.
Um, Board Member Rosati, would you, um, please state your, uh, proposed motion one more time before we request the second?
My proposed motion was to, uh, strike down staff's recommendation for supportive housing and traditional housing and uphold the emergency shelter resolution portion of the resolution.
I second that.
And now we, uh, proceed to Board Member Gamboa's, um.
Well, no, no, you have a motion and a second. So people need to either, you need to either act on the motion or someone could make a substitute motion, but you have a motion on the floor with a second. So the proper approach would be to debate it and vote on it. Do you want to call the vote, Vice Chair?
Yes, please.
Board Member Gamboa?
No.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rizotti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails because it didn't receive a majority vote. So now, then you, the motion-making can continue.
I'd like to make a motion that we decline staff's recommendation for the supportive housing, traditional housing, and emergency shelter resolution.
I second.
Board Member Gamboa?
No.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rizotti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
No.
Motion fails.
Vice Chair Hadian, I would suggest that maybe you make a motion so we can understand a little bit more clear what your goals are.
I will allow Board Member Gamboa to state his proposed motion. Board Member Gamboa?
I motion to vote on the, to approve the recommendation by staff.
As stated as is?
Yes.
Do we have a second on that? Can I second the motion as a Vice Chair?
Yes, you can. Yes, you may.
I can second that.
You may, if you wish.
I second that. But we will also vote on that right now.
Right, so then the secretary would call that vote.
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Attakunian?
No.
Board Member Rizotti?
No.
Vice Chair Hadian?
No. Now, I'm going to propose the motion to proceed with the resolution of, as proposed, with the shelters, excluding supportive housing and transitional housing, and modifying the ordinance and bringing it back for more review.
We've already voted on that. You voted no.
I don't think so. I think your first motion was only including the shelters. The second one was.
Board Member Hadian, we already voted on that exact motion, and you voted no. I made the motion.
So Vice Chair, you may want to explain what you mean in terms of amending the REZO? Is it, is it just the strikeouts that Board Member Rizotti referenced? Or are there other amendments that haven't yet been discussed that you wish to see?
Yes, because the one that Board Member Rizotti proposed is just strikes out the transitional housing and supportive housing proceeding with emergency shelters. That part is okay, but I would like to make sure that the supportive housing and transitional housing ordinance comes back with more study and more research. That's my intention. So I don't want to kill this ordinance as proposed. We would like to propose and provide transitional housing and supportive housing. But as it is, as information are provided in this packet for this ordinance is not enough to vote on the transitional housing and the supportive housing. For the emergency shelter, I'm okay. Let's proceed with that. That's my motion. But I would like to strike out the supportive and transitional, adding the comment that we want to review that at a later time with more information. How do we proceed with that?
Can I chime in? Vice Chair, and hopefully this isn't taken the wrong way, but I'm going to say this, just because what's presented in front of you tonight is a set of regulations that comply with state law. If you disagree with those provisions of state law, my suggestion would be, instead of beleagering the point, let's just move forward as is. I would, because coming back is going to bring nothing new. We're just going to come back with the same information, because those are the regulations that are in state law. I cannot bring something back to you that's going to provide something that does not comply with state law. So I don't, I don't want to waste your time. I don't want to waste the time of the group. I think we clearly understand where you stand. I think you've, there's detailed information in the administrative record based on the discussion. And I think, as the Planning Board, you've done your due diligence. You've looked at a set of, a set of regulations. We've heard where you stand on the, on the issues, both in transitional supportive and the homeless shelters. And, and you've done what you needed to do as a recommending body to the council. And at this point, my suggestion to you is move forward, whatever motion you want to move forward. But I think we've heard you loud and clear, and we'll provide the full record to the council for their consideration. But at this point, really, there's nothing that, nothing new that's going to come of it, and yet we're still under the deadline to comply with the requirements.
So let me clarify.
The point is that we don't have a motion. If we had the motion to proceed with the resolution as is, it failed.
Okay, so.
The motion was to proceed with shelters only, it failed. And the motion to proceed with shelters excluding supportive and transitional, it failed. What is the motion to proceed with right now?
So according to the Burbank Municipal Code, Title 10-1-1992, what's before you is the Board's study and report on a zone text amendment. So this says, "On all land use amendments and amendments to the property development standards, the Board shall study the proposed amendment and report to the council. The report shall include a recommendation approving or disapproving the amendment." And then it says, "If an amendment proposes an unlisted use, the recommendations shall state the zone or zones in which the use should be classified and any conditions or property development standards not provided for that." So you're, unless you have a very specific amendment that staff can put in, this is virtually the same item that came before the Board back in 2014. We couldn't reach agreement, so staff moved forward with other amendments to the housing element that could get our housing element certified. And we put in the work program, bringing these items back. So the question is, can the Board make? The Board can make a recommendation to disapprove the amendment. You weren't, well, we tried three different motions. So it could go to council recommending not approving it, recommending not approving it with specific comments, although I think Mr. Ramirez understands what your comments are, and they're clear on the record. Or you can, I mean, if you're unable to take action, then you're unable to take action.
I believe we should proceed with voting on the resolution as is offered and proposed here, or the alternative that Board Member Rizotti mentioned, excluding transitional and supportive housing. So we have the two options at least to vote one more time. If you agree, Board members, if Board members agree, please state the motion to vote on the resolution as is stated and the substitute resolution with striking out supportive housing and transitional housing.
Can I just make a statement? And I, I'm going to confer, I mean, I'm going to agree with Mr. Ramirez. I think that we have a, we voted. I think there's going to be ample notes, and I think that when they present it to council, they're going to simply say that, that the Planning Board was not in favor of supportive housing or transitional housing, but they were in favor of the emergency shelters. And then council will have to figure it out, what they want to do.
Well, am I wrong? As, as counsel for this body this evening, I would say that there's no majority opinion for anything. There were two motions, one to straight up deny the recommendation, and that motion failed 2-2. There was a recommendation to approve, recommend the ordinance for emergency shelters, but striking all the provisions for supportive and transitional housing, that failed 2-2. So then there was a motion to adopt the ordinance as worded, that failed by a vote of 1 to 3. So.
But we did have a 3-0 on declining the whole thing.
No, that motion wasn't made. That, Board Member Hadian was, was in the middle of making the fourth motion. And there was, there has not yet been a vote, unless the, my tally is wrong, there hasn't been a vote.
There was a vote where Board Member Hadian, Board Member Attakunian, and myself voted no.
That was voting against Board Member Gamboa's motion, which is not the same. That, that's just a failed motion. The same as a, a 1-3 is the same as a 2-2. The motion failed.
Let me, let me try this. Let me try this one more, let me try this one more time.
Mr. McDougall, Mr. Gamboa made a motion to, just to take a vote on the resolution as is, the way it is, the way it has been presented to us today. And that particular motion got a second by Ms. Hadian, and then we took a vote. Three of the Board members, as stated, declined to accept it. And Ms. Hadian, myself, and Mr. Rizotti, we declined. We said no. And there was a 1 yes by Mr. Gamboa. So the resolution as it stands before us today was voted on.
Board Member Attakunian, sorry to interrupt. I voted on that, but then also proposed my motion, which is to keep the emergency shelters, striking out supportive housing and transitional housing, but continuing this resolution with further information in the future. That was my substitute. So I voted on that, but that doesn't make it as final, because after that, I had the substitute motion. So right now, we have to start over.
So let me just clarify for the Board members. Denying a motion is not the same as making a recommendation. Board Member Gamboa made a motion that was seconded by Vice Chair Hadian to approve the, to adopt the resolution. That failing is not the same thing as a simple minute order or motion. I move that we recommend denial of this ordinance. That, that's, that's a, that's an action to make a recommendation to council. The vote, the motion to make a recommendation failed, but that's not the same as actually taking an affirmative action. So it's semantics, but the motion failed is not the same as approving a motion with a recommendation to deny or disapprove the ordinance.
Correctly. Basically, the recommendation failed. We had three out of the four members currently here tonight did not want to recommend the resolution as it stands before us to the City Council. That, that's the vote. So, so, and Ms. Hadian, as far as you're following up with another recommendation or another version of the resolution, it doesn't change the fact that that particular, it doesn't change the fact that the resolution, as we voted on it, failed 3 to 1. So that doesn't change any of the other votes. So as it stands now, the resolution, as it's presented, we are saying 3 to 1, we do not make the recommendation to the City Council. That's basically the closest we have gotten to resolving this resolution tonight, absent all the other subsequent or additional modifications or motions.
I believe that I did not understand Board Member Rizotti's motion that included the emergency shelters, but excluded the transitional housing and supportive housing.
We voted on that.
I know, but I think.
It was 2 to, yeah, 2, oh, I see.
I voted by mistake that I thought Board Member Rizotti is actually denying the whole thing. So my goal is to proceed with emergency shelter and hold off on the supportive housing and transitional housing.
So I guess the question to Mr. McDougall would be, since we have taken a vote on that, and it has been 2 to 2, are we able to bring that back and revote on it at this point?
You can make as many motions as you would like this evening.
Okay, Mr. Rizotti, why don't you make the motion again?
Okay, are we ready? My motion is to decline staff's recommendation for supportive housing and traditional housing and support staff's resolution for emergency shelter part of the resolution.
I second that.
Board Member Gamboa?
No.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rizotti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any persons speaking during this period may address the Board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Madam Clear, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
At this moment, we do not, but we will wait a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
And Madam Vice Chair, just when we say a couple of minutes, we'll give it two minutes and see if we get anybody on the call.
Thank you.
We do have one call in the queue.
Hello, is this Helen?
Do you need?
Hello, Helen. You're live with the Planning Board. Go on ahead.
Thank you. I just want the Planning Board to know that I do appreciate that they turned this this measure down. I've been watching this whole evening, and I have been a resident in a single-family home. My husband and I bought this 25 years ago. And we bought it on the basis that it was a single-family, quiet, resident area. We could walk our kids to school. We could have a safe neighborhood to grow up in. And I wanted to continue that way. I love Burbank, and I love this neighborhood. And I'm worried, I'm very worried, that even though the government has stated that we have to put some of these, these housing measures in, I'm worried it's going to destroy our neighborhood. And I'm practically in tears over this. And I guarantee you, I will be talking to many of my neighbors about it. And I thank you for turning it down for right now, so we can, I do want to help the homeless. I help them at my church. I support that. I just don't want people just being able to have corporations just let anybody move in next door, the house next door, all of a sudden, to any people that I don't even, I don't know, and I don't know anything about them, and it worries me. But thank you so much for your time, and thank you for. But thank you so much for your time and thank you for debating this. And thank you for turning it down. That's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other callers?
There are no callers in the queue.
Do we wait or do we proceed?
Vice Chair, I think we should, we should give it a minute and then see if there's any other callers and then we can, we can proceed after that.
There are no other callers in the queue.
Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare...
Vice Chair Hadian, sorry to interrupt. There is one caller in the queue. They just called.
Sure.
Hello, Claudia. You're live with the planning board. Go on ahead and ask your question or make your comment.
Hi, I was just calling to say I concur with the previous caller. And as a concerned citizen of Burbank, the reason why me and my family chose to live here is to live in a community that is safe for all of us. And, and I appreciate the fact that you motioned and voted not to go ahead with, with that motion. So I appreciate that. And just paying the taxes that we pay in our city to keep it safe, I wouldn't want to see it go to anyone that's going to live next door to me. That could be a potential threat to me or my family. So I thank you for that.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other callers?
We do not.
Mr. Ramirez, do we wait another minute?
I mean, I think we've been waiting for the minute already. So I think you're well within your purview, ma'am, if you want to close. Move on to the next item.
There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Do we have any reports?
We do not.
Thank you. Now is the time for the approval of the minutes from February 8, 2021, Planning Board Meeting. Are there any questions, comments, and/or in motion?
I can move that, Madam Chair.
We have a motion?
So I believe Board Member Rizadi, you made the motion.
I didn't move it, yes.
Oh, yeah, so is there, is there a second to it?
Board Member Atakunian, you are unmute.
A second motion.
Oh, Board Member Gamboa seconded. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Board Member Atakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rizadi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on, on a future agenda. Do members of the board have any items to introduce?
If I may, Vice Chair, it's not particularly an item, but I think it's a general comment. We have come across these type of situations before where we get something and, and we need to resolve or, or vote on and so forth. So perhaps in the future, instead of always asking for this, if we can have some supporting data with whatever it is that we are going to be looking at, I know this is, it could be time consuming, but something minimal to, to basically tell us the, some basic underlying facts, like, let's say, for example, today's zone code, zone text amendment. If we have gotten, let's say, if there's so many such housing in Burbank that occupies, you know, so many people are already sharing it and so forth and so on, I know there could be no limit and it's up to your discretion, but it would be very helpful to have these type of things with some sort of a, a underlying facts as it pertains to our community, as it pertains to Burbank. So we have some additional facts. I mean, obviously, we can do our own research and, and that thing, but it would be helpful to kind of throw it in there when we get these type of things. Even if, let's say, it's a school, I mean, if it's a, an amendment, I mean, a project, if we can get some additional data about, I don't know, just some facts, underlying facts that are relevant to the issue at hand to help us along in reaching our decision, I guess. It's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff want to comment on Board Member Atakunian's recommendations?
Yeah, I, I think, I think what would be really beneficial for both staff and the planning board is we should agendize a discussion of what exactly is the expectation from the board as far as information that's going to be provided? Because we have very limited resources when it comes to staffing and as much as we would like to just, you know, provide reams of information, I'd, I'd appreciate it, at least on my end for the staff, is to have a discussion so that we know exactly the level of specificity that you're going to be asking for. Because ultimately, I've got to go back and I've got to determine what that means because we have very limited resources, both staffing and then if we have to bring out outside consultants to participate. So I'm saying I, we hear you, but I think we should agendize that discussion and I'll, I'll leave it at that for that particular issue, since I know we've been given some other items to follow up on and I do have an update on some of those. So I'll, I'll just say it would be good if we could have a discussion just so we understand the bounds of, of what you're going to be, you know, what kind of information you would want to see. Just because, you know, if we can focus in, in, in some aspect, then, then maybe we can determine exactly the extent to which we have to go and gather information and also so that we are gathering the right information that you need to, as we work forward. So I think it's more a meeting so we can discuss what kind of information and maybe it's based on, if, you know, based on projects that we've brought to you or ordinances that we've brought to you and the kind of things you want to see going forward. So I, I think that's a good discussion to have. I just would like to have the discussion with the collective board so that we understand the kind of information that you're, you're looking at, at getting. Because if not, then it's kind of open-ended and I'd hate to chase a windmill in some aspect or, or get to a specific issue that you really do want to have information on. So it would be helpful for us, I think. And, and, you know, so we understand what the expectation from the board is going to be. So we want to make sure we provide you with the information you need to make an informed decision. I just, I think it would be good to have it, we can agendize it for follow-up discussion. So I think that would be helpful if, if the board so desires.
Thank you. If I may add my comments, I believe as I see on a planning agenda forecast, April 26 is the input and recommendation to the city council for the updated draft housing element. If we have time and, because it's only one item and we can dedicate a part of the next meeting to discuss and all the board members to participate on what they want to see on the resolutions, that would be great. But we need all board members' input on that.
Mr. McDougal, do we need a, a vote for this or is that something that we can just have it agendized as Vice Chair recommended for April 26?
So I think staff heard your request for an additional agenda item on the housing element before it comes to you for a vote recommendation. That's really all the discussion you can have of it for tonight, but you're... Fred, you guys are doing, are you doing workshops? There's...
Sorry, just, just to clarify, I think Vice Chair, you were talking about having an agendized item just to talk about, like, information you would be looking for on ordinances and, and background information to support. So that'd be separate, but it'd be an agendized item the same night as the housing element? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, because what Board Member Atakunian explained is that we need to have more clarification on these macro resolutions that impact the city as a whole versus the small resolution that are like CUPs or, uh, single families. So the stuff that are game changer, we need to look into those items more, with more detail.
Well, so this'll, this'll be the agenda item. I mean, this is already an un-agendized discussion. So I think we have enough information for there to be a meeting about the level of detail that the planning board would like to see in staff reports and other information that they believe would be relevant. Because Fred doesn't, you know, he, he has staff right to findings, right? He has them right to what the code requires. So it, it's a good discussion and it relates to both policy, which the housing element is a policy. It relates to regulations. This resolution before you this evening is not policy. It's actually the zoning regulation as to what's a permitted use. And it may also relate to specific project proposals. And so that, I think it's sufficient to say it should be a robust discussion to include project proposals all the way up to policy documents to, to match Fred's resources to planning board's expectations on detail and, you know, community cross-section information that's important to project types.
Thank you. And in the same direction, are we voting on April 26 on the housing element or is it just a review on the draft?
Lisa's on the, I don't know if Lisa's still on the call, but let me get back to you. I believe this is, this is actually bringing the item before you for consideration. So it's input and recommendation to the council. So you would be looking at the document itself and making recommendations on it.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I hope we have enough time to review the housing element. Because sometimes one session and one hearing is not enough to discuss and make modifications. So I don't know if next meeting for the housing element, we're going to have enough time to actually review the entire housing element and to make modifications, but we will see.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may, as far as agendizing that second item for the April 26 meeting, if it's possible, I know it's short notice, if it's possible, if we can hear from the, let's say, Mr. Ramirez's group, what are some of the information that you can easily obtain that would be relevant to projects? Maybe that will help us along too. Maybe that'll satisfy the inquiry. Instead of, you know, we can get into a lengthy discussion and discuss what we would be looking for under different circumstances. But if it's something that you have your hands on and, and are able to provide to us and say, hey, you know, we, we can provide you these type of informations. We have access to this type of information that we can easily get to you, if that's possible. If it's not, no worries.
We'll, we'll put, I think we'll put, we have to agendize it for discussion, so I'll leave it at that. And we'll, we'll come back and provide you with a narrative on what's available to us and, and we can go from there to start the discussion.
And Board Member Atakunian, as a part of the binder, we always have two pages. On the first, the opening of the binder, that is city council's expectation to staff and city council, how we work together. Those may be actually good guidelines for planning board and discussing what our expectation is of the staff. So those are also helpful. So now is the time, okay, this is the agenda item. Do we have any other agenda items to discuss or this was the only one by Board Member Atakunian? Now is the time for city planner comments. Any comments from the city planner?
Just one, I mean, well, I have a couple, but the first one, just want to thank you guys for your input tonight. That was helpful. It was robust and it's a good discussion on the issue. It is a, a thorny issue in many ways and one that, you know, like I said, it was a long time coming considering when it was to be considered previously. So thank you for that. The other one, I wanted to just provide you with an update regarding the R1 standards and, you know, what, what would be follow-up. So as I've mentioned before, and when it's been staffing and, and resource to actually hire a consultant, and we've gotten some direction from, from, you know, within the department and also city manager's office to proceed with doing a request for proposals to consider an update to the R1 standards. So we'll be undertaking that in the next couple of weeks. And once we select a consultant, we'll have a meeting with you all to discuss. I think it'll be helpful to have a discussion with you all as far as stakeholders. We'll also be reaching out to others to look at what possible things to consider for updating the R1 standards and helping to, one, streamline the process, I think, where, where best we can while still preserving the major components of preserving community character in neighborhood. And hopefully through this process, help us to facilitate development. That's consistent in protecting the neighborhoods, responsible development, but also do it in a way that we can reduce the review times because right now, based on the complexity of the code and the fact that there's a lot of triggers that require additional discretionary review, the, you know, additions up to full-on, single-family, new construction, and with the caseload being what it is, have been pushed, you know, almost to a year. So it's taking a significant amount of time. So we're hoping that putting our collective heads together, right? The board, the staff, stakeholders that we'll be reaching out to and we'll have a vetting process through the community, that maybe there's some potential ways to improve it while still preserving the major component, which is addressing mass and scale to, to ensure that what gets built is consistent with the neighborhood, but also provide some flexibility so that we don't capture potentially some projects that would otherwise be, you know, standard additions. But for whatever reason, because of some of the triggers under the code, it requires additional review. And maybe, maybe we need to find that threshold, we need to refine that threshold through this process. And that's, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We now adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, April 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following two ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage at www.burbankca.gov/ecomments. And two, by calling in directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participation and have a good night.
Good night.